Good evening, friends. Please have a seat when you can. We'll get this meeting started. Good evening and welcome to the Bennington Select Board meeting on April 8, 2019. I am Vice Chairman Donald Campbell. We will be reorganizing the board momentarily, but before we do, it is a great privilege to have with us here many members of the American Legion. They tonight have offered to come and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If it would suit you all, I'd love to have you come up front. Please, we'll all face the flag and follow your lead.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Photo opportunity. Take your time. Do stay. We'll be reading a proclamation in your honor in just a minute. So, the first order of business tonight is reorganization of the Select Board, consistent with our charter. And the first thing that needs to be done is we need to elect a chairperson. So, I would accept a nomination for the chair, if any are forthcoming.
Put a motion for Donald Campbell to be the chair.
Thank you. Any seconds?
I second that.
Thank you, Jean. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Great. Thank you very much. The second thing we have to do is to decide a vice chair. And if anyone has a nomination for vice chair, I would accept that at this time.
I would like to nominate Jeanne Jenkins for vice chair.
Okay. Jeanne Jenkins has been nominated. Are there any seconds?
I'll second that.
Okay. Thank you, Chad. All in favor of Jeanne Jenkins as vice chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's great. Well, so, just briefly, before we go into the agenda, I have a couple of things that I would like to say. This is a comments looking forward to this year. Couple of quick points. First of all, I'm very honored to be the chairman, but I'm even more honored to have Jeanne as a vice chair. Thank you very much for being willing to do that. But although I'm chairman, really, the chair is really a leader among equals on this board. And although the proposed charter change delegates the chair as the head of town government for ceremonial purposes, together, the full Select Board is the head of this town. The chair runs the meetings and works with the staff and the vice chair to build meeting agendas. But a strength of any Select Board is having multiple contacts throughout the community. And I encourage you to contact them. For example, if you're wondering about economic development, or higher education, or recreation, you might contact Jeanne. If you're interested in the medical system, or businesses, or downtown, things like that, maybe you know Carson. He might be a good person. Public schools, sports, recreation, Chad would be a great contact. Arts, affordable housing, education system, contact Jean. Legislation updates and economic development, Jim's the man. And energy and business and all things North Bennington, we're lucky to have Bill Scully join us now. So, thank you very much for being part of that. I encourage you to talk to them about any issue. And while no board member can speak for the board, they'll communicate your concerns with me and the town staff. And if you have a problem with town services, please start with Town Manager Stuart Hurd, since he's most likely to be able to help. The second thing is an implementation of an annual work calendar. This is a work in progress, but should lead to greater consistency and transparency. And Stuart will talk further about this in his report. The third thing is the Town Manager review. Our Town Manager is our most critical employee, and we owe him the benefit of real-time feedback in addition to his annual employee review. So, quarterly, we'll be making time in executive session to review the manager's job and to help him better achieve his goals. Fourth, the town vision. Because good change requires consistency and perseverance, and elected officials come and go, we have a town plan to guide us. If you are wondering what's the town's vision, we encourage you to dig into it. The top seven goals, among many, are to strengthen Bennington's economy, to enhance downtown areas while supporting rural countryside, to capitalize on our natural and historic resources, to encourage housing that is affordable and desirable, to provide a good transportation system for all users, to improve community facilities as able, and to promote energy efficiency and renewable energy. These goals are not all exclusive. And there are many more aspirations and countless other projects underway. The Bennington Planning Commission has done tremendous amount of thoughtful planning for our future, so in the next meeting or two, we will invite them to give an update on their big projects for this year. They've got some exciting stuff coming up. In my opinion, the current town plan somewhat understakes this community's shared commitment to being a fair, inclusive society, one in which we actively resist discrimination against people for their race, gender, sexual orientation, religion, or financial circumstances. This year, the town will be implementing implicit bias training for all staff. With outside help, we will be evaluating best practices for our police department. And the town is exploring a possible year-long partnership with the Center for Advancement of Public Action to design a meaningful inquiry into how we can be the most welcoming, inclusive community possible. This should be part of our town plan. And very importantly, we have to live within our means, as always. Whenever possible, this board knows we must sharpen our pencil and keep municipal taxes at or below inflation. Unlike many communities, I'm pleased to say that under Stu's management, this frequently happens. So, we have two pieces of, brief pieces of business before we move into the next agenda item. You all received the Conflict of Interest policy. Does everybody understand that or have any concerns with the Conflict of Interest policy? That's a policy that we have signed, and I believe serves us well.
Sign it again for this year.
This was signed in August, in September of 16. We'll sign it again this fall. We should sign it again. Yep, we should, we should sign it again. So, everybody's, everybody's fully on board. We'll work on that. There is a slight gray area in Conflict of Interest. I think in a small town, people often wear multiple hats and serve on multiple boards. And avoiding this is not always practical, but whenever possible, I would ask my fellow board members to remove themselves from boards of organizations that receive funds directly through the town's municipal budget, upon which this board decides. And by this, I do not mean the nonprofit agencies. Their funding is decided by voters, not the board. But becoming an ex officio board member, one that does not vote, is encouraged. It behooves us to have a representative from our board that is deeply knowledgeable about our key partners' work. Occasionally, it may be too much of a loss for our community to have one of our good people leave a board. In these isolated instances, we can count on our members to recuse themselves when appropriate. The last thing we have to review before moving on is the Bennington Select Board policies and rules of procedure, which we do annually at the time of reorganization. I apologize that there were two copies circulated. The copy from August 31 of 18 is the copy that we are currently working under. Does anybody have any concerns or questions about that? Not hearing any. I will move on to our consent agenda. So, we are looking at the minutes of March 25, 2019, as well as the warrants, which have been circulated, and a couple of proclamations that we will be reading after we approve the consent agenda. Would anybody like to make a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Anyone second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeanne. Okay. Any discussion about either the minutes of the March 25 or the warrants?
I have one question about the warrants.
Go ahead.
For you, Stu. I think I said this earlier. The amounts that are subtracted off the total of those is checks that weren't issued, sent back. Is there a way we can find that out? Just for my reference. They're tiny amounts. I'm just curious.
Actually, I believe those checks were issued ahead of the warrant. The original warrant. No, they were subtracted. You're right, Bill. Frankly, they're so small, I can't have an answer for you tonight.
No, that's fine. Yeah. That really wasn't, in the future, just if I see them, I just would be curious as to what the nature was.
Yeah. It would be, yes. I think we can include the reasoning for that.
Fair point. So, you'll get back to us on that.
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Jeanne?
On page seven, Stu, we just talked about it, just in case anyone's interested. In the middle of the page, Syncartha Bennington Solar.
Yes.
For $12,000. So, would you just explain the situation?
Yes. That has to do with the lease proposal for placing solar panels on the roofs of the wastewater treatment facility, the compost facility specifically. This is a reimbursable expense. Our attorney is reviewing their attorney's proposal, and they are paying those legal fees. And I looked it down to confirm that, just for the note.
Syncartha is also the company that would pay the, our debt here is due on the, so they.
Very good. It may be those instead.
Can you just check on which?
I will confirm that. But more than likely, Dan is correct.
Okay.
Since he's overseeing those particular contracts.
Okay. Neither of those changes seem like reason to hold up the vote. Would anybody, let's see, all in favor of accepting the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. unanimous? Now, we have, we have some very special proclamations tonight. And the first one is in honor of our friends who are here from the American Legion. And I'm going to take the liberty of reading this. It says, "Whereas the American Legion has been a staunch advocate for veterans and their families since 1919, and whereas the American Legion was founded on the four pillars of care for veterans, a strong national defense, Americanism, and children and youth, and whereas the American Legion has played a leading role in initiatives and write-throughs that have affected the lives of Americans in every community, from U.S. Flag Code to G.I. Bill, and whereas Post-13 has fulfilled the Legion's mission since 1919 through programs such as scholarships, Legion Riders, American Legion Post-13 Baseball, National Emergency Fund, Troop and Family Support, Boy Scouts, and Health Benefits for Veterans, and whereas the American Legion is celebrating its centennial in 2019, now therefore be it resolved that we, the Bennington Select Board, do hereby proclaim American Legion Centennial Day to be the 13th day of April 2019." You've heard the motion. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve it?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of this proclamation honoring the American Legion and our friends in this room tonight, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for coming. I'm going to, I'm going to take just a minute. I'm sorry I missed your name, sir, but I had a very nice conversation with a gentleman in the front row, who, if you would stand up for just a minute, please, or maybe just point the camera at him. This fellow is 95 years old, and he's a veteran of World War II. And we wish you many more good years. So, the second proclamation that we have to read tonight, Jeanne, do you have that in front of you?
Career Month.
The Career Month?
Yes.
The chair, do you want to circulate that one for signature? Perhaps we could present it to them before?
Let's do that.
Well, I'm really pleased to read the Career Month proclamation. I co-chair the Bennington County Workforce and Education Committee.
Hang on, just a second. What's that?
I'll catch you.
Okay. Would you like to, are you saying you'd like to get this signed? And why don't we do that? Why don't we sign this first? And then we'll make a presentation, and then we'll move on to this.
That's a good idea.
Thank you. No pressure, but sign fast.
Mr. Chairman, I think it would be fitting if we knew a little bit about, more about this member of the Greatest Generation. I wonder if we could have him introduce himself.
Would you be willing to do that?
I'm not sure. I joined in '42, almost in '46. About a week before '46, Christmas time, right on. I put almost three and a half years in the Pacific. My ship got hit a couple times. I'm on the island. Thank you. Thank you for answering.
So, if you, would you like to receive this? So, on behalf of the Bennington Select Board, we would like to offer this proclamation honoring the American Legion. Thanks very much. You all, of course, are welcome to stay for the meeting, but you also are welcome to leave if you don't want to stay. We will completely understand. So, but we thank you very much for coming.
That is great.
So, if, if we can, I think it would be nice to move on to the recognition of the Career Month, which has been happening and has been a very important thing for us. Thank you very much. It's been a very important thing for this community and continues to be a very important thing. So, Jeanne, if you've got that in front of you, would you please read us that?
I will. Okay. So, proclamation, Bennington Career Month. Whereas Bennington County Workforce and Education Committee stakeholders are robust, grassroots, community-based collaborative, inclusive of members from community organizations, institutions, and employers, and whereas Bennington County, consistent with state of Vermont as a whole, faces workforce challenges that includes but is not limited to current and forecasted labor shortages, declining labor force participation rates, and misconceptions of local job and career pathway opportunities, and whereas Bennington County Workforce and Education Committee stakeholders are instrumental in effectively collaborating on resolving workforce challenges one project at a time, and whereas Workforce and Education Committee stakeholders develop specialized K through adult continuum of career pathway exploration projects that help raise awareness of opportunities, improving current and future talent pipelines in relation to engagement with the local job economies, and whereas Workforce and Education Committee stakeholders remain keenly in tune with project impact evaluation, trends, opportunities, and challenges within the local workforce economy, and whereas the month of April is Bennington Career Month, a culmination of events and activities in Bennington County that celebrates career pathway awareness at every level and recognizes the positive impact collaborative workforce development has on labor force, employers, and the Bennington County economy, and now therefore be it resolved that we, the Bennington Select Board, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Bennington Career Month.
Well done.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve this proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor of a proclamation supporting Career Month, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much, Jeanne. Before we move on to the next item, would you give us 30-second highlights of what might be?
Yes. This month, we have 25 to 30 different activities. The most recent was front page of the Bennington Banner Today, which was the Reality Fair for 10th graders. Everything from entrepreneur fairs for 5th graders to college prep work, and the manufacturing forum that happened last week. There are events all month, and they are designed to showcase what's happening all year in this county. The number of volunteers and community members. Thank you, Jean, for being part of the Reality Fair last Friday. It's hundreds of people that volunteer their time to make this happen.
That's great.
Yes.
Great for our community. Thank you for that update.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I think there's a new member among the board. I wonder if it would be appropriate to introduce him?
Sure. And I should have thought of that early on. But why don't we, why don't we ask him, why don't we ask Mr. Bill Scully, who we're very glad to have on the board, introduce himself? And just tell us, give us your quick hello, please.
Well, hello. I am the new member. It's me, and I'm really happy to be working with this group. And been talking to a lot of people from the community over the past few weeks, and people who work with the Regional Commission and the town, and really been having a great time getting settled in and becoming a part of things here. So, thank you.
Thanks, Bill. We're glad to have you with us. So, this proclamation is making its way. Get ready for more signing. We have one more proclamation that we would like to have read, and that is in support of, Jeanne, would you like to tell us about this?
Sure. It's the proclamation on recognizing National Library Week 2019. Whereas today's libraries are not just about books, but what they do for and with people. Libraries are at the heart of cities, towns, schools, and campuses, and whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions where people of all backgrounds can be together and connect, and build strong communities through transformative services, programs, and expertise. And whereas libraries are the cornerstones of democracy by promoting the free exchange of information and ideas, keeping people informed and aware of community events and issues, and whereas libraries and library workers partner with other civic organizations, empower their communities to make informed decisions, and ensure the community's needs are being met. And whereas libraries are a resource for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status, by offering services and educational resources that transform lives and strengthen communities. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Bennington Select Board, proclaim National Library Week, April 7 through 13, 2019. We encourage all residents to visit the library this week and explore what's new at your library and engage with your librarian. Libraries transform.
Thank you. Well, read. Do I have a motion to approve that proclamation?
So moved.
Anyone like to second that?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? The only discussion I would have is that it does say, "Visit your library." We're lucky in this community to have two wonderful libraries.
That's true.
And so, actually, you're, maybe we put it to people to go out and visit both of your libraries and give them your support. All in favor of this proclamation, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Unanimous. Thank you very much. So, we will now move on to a, the public comment portion of the meeting. Citizens' comment is a time we reserve to hear residents' thoughts about topics not on the agenda. We welcome your insights, but because topics are unworn, this is not a time for board discussion or decision-making. Please state your name when you approach the mic. Refrain from making personal attacks, and keep your comments to under three minutes. If you have a factual question, such as town dates or process, the manager or the board will try to answer your questions. We have a sign-up list tonight, and the first person on that list, who must have gotten here right at the very beginning, because I saw him walking in, is Mr. Bill Knight. Would you like to come up, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Even though I've introduced you, please give us your name and let us know what's on your mind. I'll move that. Thank you.
My name is Bill Knight, and I'm president of the Apple Hill Homeowners Association. I know you're all pretty familiar with me. The Apple Hill Homeowners Association has been involved the last six years this month, trying to block the construction of the two solar projects adjoining the Apple Hill Homeowners Association for a lot of various reasons. As I stated, it's been six years. You're lucky I'm not going to try to bring Mr. Scully up to date on everything that's happened over the last six years. I'd just like to cover one point. Although I think both of the projects, the Apple Hill and the Chelsea, are in appeal process right this, right now, but the one point of interest that's come up to us is the, the site plan calls for, if they do cut these 20-some-odd acres of trees down, it calls for chipping the small trees, the brush, the limbs, and not burning them. We've had some problems with these, this company circumventing a lot of the rules and regulations, and actually, right now in Rutland, they're, they're building a solar project, and that site plan calls for chipping the limbs, the small trees, the briars, and all that sort of thing, but they're burning them. And that's going against all the regulations, and we know how these things have been working with this company. We just want to make sure, when and if this happens here, we don't want it burning up in Apple Hill. So, we just want to make this on record that we're obviously against that, because it's in the site plan not to burn, and just want our town officials and everybody hopefully be proactive and not let them do this burning, because along with just the obvious, the ash and everything, the Apple Hill Homeowners Association is right in the middle of the PFOA, the Zone of Contamination. So, burning all these trees that's obviously contaminated with the toxic PFOA is going to spread this throughout the community. So, we obviously, for that reason, don't want to burn either.
Yeah.
So, that's just, in summary, we just want to make certain that they abide by the site plan and chip all the debris and not burn it.
Okay. Thank you very much. I really appreciate you coming in in timely fashion.
All right.
Anticipating things before we have a problem.
Yeah. We don't need more problems with that.
No, we don't need more problems. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce Lee Clark.
Hi. Bruce Lee Clark. I'm here to talk about the plastic ban ordinance that has been suggested that you pass. And I know that S-113 has passed through the Senate, is now in the House, and there might be a temptation on your part to say, "Let's wait until the state does what the state will do." And I'm here to suggest to you that that's really not what you should be doing. As I understand it, having heard all of you speak about this, you're all pretty much in favor of some kind of ordinance. It would be my suggestion that you in fact pass an ordinance, even if it's a copy of S-113, though I wish you would have an effective date before June of 2020. And the reason is this. The Retailers Association for Vermont really does not want to have a piecemeal approach to this. They would love to have a statewide approach. One way to make sure that the state actually acts this session is for there to be more pressure brought in from below. And that would be what I would be asking you to do, to go on record. There are a number of ways to do it. I know you're going to hear somebody else who has another suggestion, but it, it seems to me the strongest statement would be one coming from you as an ordinance that would be- be eventually superseded by a state ordinance, state law, if it ever takes place there. Since I would hope that we have a majority here on this board that would be in favor of banning single-use plastics, it would seem to me that this is an opportune time for you as a strategy to take into, that into account, send a clear message to the whole legislature in Vermont and to pass that ordinance as soon as possible. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, Elizabeth, please come up. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here tonight and thank you Select Board members for all your encouragement and assistance throughout this process. My name is Elizabeth. I'm relatively new resident to Bennington. I am here today on behalf of Climate Advocates of Bennington to address our proposal of banning single-use plastic bags in Bennington. As you know, a proposal to ban all single-use plastic consumer goods has been introduced to the state legislature. So tonight we are urging you as a Select Board to address this and our community and state contribution to our global plastic problem by writing a letter to our local and state legislators in support of the Senate Bill S-113. This law would prohibit single-use plastic carryout bags, expanded polyesterine, and plastic straws, all of which are products that are readily disposed of and inconvenient to reuse. Furthermore, these products fill our landfills, pollute our oceans and natural environment, and threaten our public health. In addition to raising awareness of the global plastic problem, this legislation would make it easier for everyone to choose environmentally friendly choice, which allows us to work together as a community to amplify our efforts and improve the quality of our environment and public health for generations to come. At this moment, we'd also like to encourage anyone else who is interested and passionate about this issue and legislation, young and old, to write to your local legislators and voice your support for this bill. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Yeah, it, people should be writing to their legislators about this if they feel strongly about it. Stuart, where are we on this? I think this board has long felt that we would like to see a regional proposal and not a, not a piecemeal proposal ourselves. I think we don't want to be the community that loses businesses because we have a ban that's different from everybody else's, but do you have a sense of where we are with this?
Well, the Bennington County Solid Waste Alliance meets actually Thursday night. I did not attend their previous meeting. I understand there was some disagreement as to whether or not the alliance would pursue a regional countywide ordinance. Some of the towns in the county have adopted the ordinance and ordinance banning plastic bags. I haven't seen those ordinances, but they, they have, we're doing it step by step. I think from my perspective, I think the most efficient way to deal with this is for this board to make a statement and whether it's passed on via the manager's office, to the legislative delegation and beyond, or through the chair, that if it is your intent to take a position in opposition to the use of these plastic products, then you should so state and either direct the manager's office or the board to send on that information. I mean, we have a representative sitting at the table with us tonight. I think he's pretty clear about the feelings of the board and perhaps, Jim, you can help me as to where the...
I would only be too happy to do that. Because I don't know where the House is on it, but the Senate has actually taken action.
But it would be nice, I think, for the board, as a board, as a Select Board, to write a letter and support.
Bill?
I was going to mention this at the end, but I wanted to ask, would it be all right to think about looking at a draft at the next meeting of the board supporting S-113 and maybe at the same time stating that we will pursue adopting a similar ordinance if the state fails to act this session?
Seems like a good solution, seems consistent with our previous discussions on this matter, seems like it addresses some of the concerns that you brought up tonight and thank you very much. So we'll look at it at the next meeting, hopefully finalize that. Thank you for your concern. Nancy White, please come up. Good evening, Nancy.
Hi, I'm Nancy White. There's a lot of questions and concerns in Bennington in regards to the Berkshire YMCA coming to town and with United Counseling moving part of its operation to the REC Center. So I was glad to hear last month that the town had put together a group of different people and organizations to talk about this over the next year. But then the town said that these meetings would be closed to members of the public to attend. And I'd like to know if the Select Board will require these meetings to be open to anybody who wants to go and listen.
Stuart, what do we know about this thing?
I don't think, I don't know of any statement, Nancy, that said that they would be closed to the public.
I think Mr. Campbell asked and Dan said they would be closed, but members of the Select Board could attend and that the group would come before the Select Board four times a year to talk about what they had said.
I don't know that that's the approach that, that the committee has taken, certainly.
I think everyone's in their own, we can come up with a pretty clear answer. Shannon's here too. What's the...
Shannon, is there any reason why this can't be, why public participation would be...
I think people should reserve what we spoke about last time. Should I come?
Yes, please do. Come to the mic.
Hi. I'm Shannon. So I'm the, I'm Shannon Bersati, I'm the Community Development Director for the Town of Bennington. I believe Jeanne Connor asked last time, why couldn't, there's four meetings, why couldn't they all be public? But the idea of the committee is to sort of enact a work plan and so we don't want to have each meeting kind of recreate the wheel, but I don't see why people couldn't attend to listen. Does that make sense? Because if at each meeting we're repeating the exact same presentation, then it sort of defeats the purpose.
So you won't be meeting once a month or that often?
No, it's only quarterly.
So how are citizens going, are these, are there going to be minutes taken?
Yes.
But none of these meetings will be televised?
They're not televised. The meetings could be posted on the town website.
So how will the Select Board be talking about what's going to be discussed at these meetings?
Will they attend or watch, listen to the minutes or...
Well, I know, I believe that the next Select Board meeting on the 22nd, the new director of the REC Center, who's also the associate director at the Y, is going to make that first presentation.
Okay.
So that's, because there are quarterly presentations to the Select Board, that's also another way to inform the public of what is happening.
Couple of concerns I have.
Thank you, Shannon.
Was the meeting that was, she may know, but you may know too, was the meeting that was held last week, was that announced publicly?
Yes.
Okay. I talked to somebody before I came who was asked to be on the board, who very much wanted to be on the board. She works and she said the meetings are held at 3:30. Another person who works who was supposed to be on the board wasn't able to go. I think if citizens want to be involved, I think you have to hold these meetings at a time where people who are working are going to be able to get there. I really think for...
So to be clear, this isn't a board, right? This is a work group.
No, it's a, it's a, it's a work group to basically give citizen input to the town staff and the Y.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a board. That's an important distinction.
Okay. But there are different groups represented in this working group. Is there a senior on that board representing the seniors in the community?
Yes, Eleanor, the volunteer.
Okay. Are there homeowners on the board representing the local taxpayers?
There are, yes, there are local long-time REC centers that are, that is about them.
But there aren't people who aren't active members of the REC Center that are participating?
There aren't?
No, I'm asking you, are there specific people who aren't tied up to the REC Center, but who would be speaking on behalf of those of us who pay local taxes?
Yes.
Okay. And at the meeting that you have, will it be possible to have the head of the Pittsfield YMCA here also?
You can certainly invite him to attend.
Nancy, I'm going to interrupt this a little bit and ask you to work directly with Shannon on this, if you would, please.
Okay.
So it feels to me like we're, it's, the guiding principle is we do want to have public input. Shannon's going to work on that. If it's, if it's not working for you, let's have you two communicate and if we can improve it, we will.
Okay. But are you going to set time aside? When, when does the contract have to be signed? If it's going to be signed, when will that date be?
Not until the end of this year, in September. There will be a review process culminating with the third of these citizen, excuse me, input meetings. There'll be a report to the board as to how this has been functioning and whether or not, I think it should be moving forward. So there'll be plenty of time, as this was a year transition period and we've asked the folks who are working in the transition to report out as to how it's going in September of this year.
Okay. But this isn't a done deal, is it?
Pardon me?
You haven't signed on to bring the Berkshire YMCA to Bennington, have you?
We've signed a contract for a year transition period and that will be reviewed by the board in September of this coming year, September and October more than likely.
Okay.
And there'll be another agreement. If in fact we're moving forward, there has to be another formal action by the board.
Okay. Is this something that the voters should vote on rather than the Select Board? We're talking a $650,000 budget between parks and recreation and between the senior center.
Yeah, well, I think that this is something actually that our town staff is managing very well. So I would be interested to know what you think about this, but it feels to me like we're heading in a very good direction with this.
I think there are many questions and concerns that people in Bennington have. You may not share them. I think a lot of us in Bennington have these questions.
We'll know more after we have a public...
I can, I can basically say that the law does not require that the voters act on a contract that the Town of Bennington initiates and may sign.
Well, and we'll know, we'll, there'll be more communication about this as we get reports and as we learn what's going on.
I agree, but it's not required.
This is an uncertain time. There are a lot of people that are feeling uncertainty about, about the REC Center and I understand that, I think we all understand that. And yet we really are trying to move this forward in a good way, but we do have to end citizens' comments.
Okay. Last question. The Berkshire YMCA, if they come to Bennington, they will not be paying anything to our local town budget, is that correct?
They will not be paying anything to our local town budget.
Are they a tax-exempt organization?
They would be, it would be a contractual relationship. They would be managing a town asset.
But they don't get the property.
They won't be paying to the...
They don't get the property.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate your, Nancy, I noticed you did not put your phone number on here. Shannon, do you know how to get in touch with her?
Oh, trust me, they've all got my number at the town office.
Okay, all right. So we do, we do ask on this sheet if you would like us to try to contact you to leave your phone number and thank you very much. So the next...
Did I make a very brief announcement before you...
You know, you may have thirty seconds, but that's it.
Thirty seconds?
Yes. Please introduce yourself and go.
Okay, Joe Board, and we're majorly talking about what, I've never, ever been on board with the Apple Hill gang, but today he said something right. So go for it. The other thing is the plastic bags. I really, really hope you guys go all up for that. The other thing is, I'm not sure that any of you really understand, except maybe Bill Scully, the idea of community solar. So when one or two or three people can block a community solar effort, that is unconscionable to me. So whatever arises in these next few months regarding community solar and your wastewater treatment plant and the Shatterbrook Farm, please know that the community is after the community solar. I have already have several nonprofits on board to go on to the downtown, the Shatterbrook Farm solar project. And a couple of residents that may or may not build a house is mind-blowing to me.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your thoughtful comments. So the next item of business is the marketing RFP and this is a conversation that I hope we will take as much time as we need to on, although we are only scheduled to take half an hour on it. The person who's going to lead us through this is our shiny new Community Development Director and Shannon, thank you very much for being willing to take us through this. The RFP, we have all received and reviewed and, but before we go to board questions on it, would you give us a little overview and tell us where you think we are, please?
Sure. Just so everyone knows, an RFP means a request for proposals and this is an RFP for website development and digital marketing services for the Town of Bennington, specifically for Bennington, Vermont Begins Here. So some overview, the Town of Bennington seeks to draw visitors from throughout the northeast travel market to visit Bennington and patronize its many cultural and recreational attractions. In year one, the cornerstone of these efforts will be the launch of a tourism website along with ongoing digital marketing efforts to drive traffic to the website. By providing meaningful visually appealing content and promoting the content through search engine optimization and digital marketing efforts, our goal is to draw users to the site and in turn drive tourism traffic to Bennington establishments and attractions. So some context and background to this goal is a few years ago, the town received a USDA Rural Development Grant for about $18,000, I believe, to conduct branding work that resulted in Bennington, Vermont Begins Here campaign. The surrounding campaign was primarily economic development focused and resulted in three high-quality videos, a printed lure brochure, and the beginnings of an economic development-focused website. Due to staffing changes and a lack of focused funding, the site was never fully built out, but it still exists. The town has the URL, there's also a Facebook page and now an Instagram account. In 2019, the Bennington Select Board recognized the need to designate focused marketing dollars into attracting tourism to Bennington. In addition to the Vermont Begins Here site being inactive, also, as you know, the Bennington Chamber is now marketing the entire region as the Shires. So the question became, who's marketing Bennington? And the, for, the town first approached the Better Bennington Corporation and then a task force was formed that gave the presentation to the board. The funding of the project is sourced through the Town of Bennington Community Development Office, so I'll be the point person for, the town will be the client. What we're looking for is to hire basically one digital marketing firm that can do all of the work, that's our preference, because it can be quite difficult to manage one person developing the website and another person doing the marketing efforts. We want to make sure it's a seamless, a seamless thing. And the scope of work, which is in the RFP, is basically the setup of the website, design and setup of an email template for future mailers that integrates Mailchimp lists, so creating an email subscription service, and then the ongoing digital marketing support to drive people to that website. So that includes search engine optimization, which is basically influencing Google to identify the key words and drive them, the key words that people type into Google and that they'll be driven to this site. Pay-per-click marketing, which is creating and testing ads and messaging across multiple channels, social media ads and boosts on Facebook and Instagram, Google Display Network and YouTube remarketing, as well as in the digital marketing support, training and assistance to town staff to do the pieces of this that we don't need to hire a consultant for. So that's worked into this as well. One of the benefits of digital marketing is that it is measurable, so you can really use Google Analytics and Facebook Analytics to see, is this working? How many people are going to the website? How many people have subscribed to the email subscription service? So that is one of the reasons this makes a lot of sense for the town, is if we're going to invest in marketing, that we want to be able to measure the results. And this is basically a longer-term proposal. If anyone saw that presentation, that this would be the first phase, which is building the infrastructure. So the goal is that it's a work in progress with the hopes of including targeted print and perhaps television ads over time. But you need that initial website that everything can be driven to. Basically, the marketing task force has also saved the town time and money by creating a wireframe, which is like an outline of the website, and procuring photos, some of which, Michael Harrington, who was formerly in this role, that was part of how the funding from the USDA grant was used, was for really high-resolution photographs. So we have quite a bit of material. So, we have quite a bit of material, but what that task force has done is to really revisit it, organize it, create a template that we can then hand to a consultant, and it will save us a lot of money and time to do that. So, the Town is the client, and I'll be the contact person. The firm is building the infrastructure, but we are giving them the content. So, within this, it's important to note that not included in the scope of work is the photography, the directory content, blog content, influencer outreach, email content, social posts, event calendar, or logo development. We're not asking the marketing firm to do that. And my role, I'm not a marketer, but I am good at consensus-building, and that is going to be really important, because we need to collaborate with all the other downtown organizations, the Chamber, BCIC, the Regional Economic Development Group, Bennington Area Arts Council, and others, so that we're not duplicating efforts and that everyone has a chance to weigh in on the content of the website. So, that's the background.
So, let's do a round of board questions, and we'll have some conversation about that, and then when we get through with that, we'll open it up to anybody in the audience that has questions and would want to weigh in on this. When Tom was the Chair, he used to go right down the line, go from person to person to person. I don't know if, I've always wondered if we need to do that. I don't feel like everybody needs to feel like they need to speak every time. My preference would be, who has an opinion on this? Jim, go ahead.
Well, funnily enough, this past week, we had a Commerce Committee meeting with, talking about boosting the tourism budget. And I invite you to go back and look at, and I'll talk with you later about it. And we had several, quite a few witnesses who came to us and talked about their success stories in marketing their individual businesses and regions, and I'd be more than happy to spend some time with you about that and direct you to those witnesses. It was really very, very exciting and enlightening what these small businesses, individuals, individual businesses had done with a very small budget.
That's great, Jim. Thanks for sharing that. Did you have any comments on the RFP itself in terms of the things you feel like should be...
Well, I think what's going to be critical is who we choose, you know, who it is, and what their track record is, how they're going to measure the success. And again, I'll reemphasize that, you know, I'll talk with you about the successes that those businesses shared before the Commerce Committee, and we'll go from there.
And it is important to point out, too, that this is going to be public in the banner, and I'm not sure where else we post RFPs like this, but we'll also be reaching out, I'll be reaching out individually to at least four different companies, because there really are only a few in our region that do all of this sort of work. So, we have one in Bennington, but there are also a few in the Berkshires that I know of and in Brattleboro, so I'll be sending this to all of them.
There's one other thing that bears mentioning, and that is through fellow committee members noted that in most of the businesses who talked about the success and were requesting a greater marketing budget for the state in general, is the lack of diversity. In other words, there were very few people of color when they were marketing their particular businesses and their regions. So, that's really, I think that's an important consideration to make with respect to the Town in general.
Good point. Okay, let's go Jean and then Jean, Jeannie and then Jean. Sorry.
We were confused. Okay. So, I was happy to hear you say that you were going to be the convener, so I just want to clarify, I just want to make sure I understand what that means. So, that as, so the Town is supplying content to this, but it means that you also are sort of looking at what else is out there so that we have a common look?
Right, so we're not duplicating, so that we have, well, we want our website to have a common look, but we also want to not duplicate, you know, efforts with all of the other things that are out there.
And so, who will, I mean, in some ways, it seems like we would want, I mean, duplication can be good, because then you're selling, you're selling the same thing, right? So, who, will this be the job of whoever is hired to sort of say, here are the places where we want to, where, you know, it's great that the Chamber's also highlighting covered bridges or whatever it is, and here are places where it makes sense for there to be distinct, you know, distinct things that we're promoting. Who is responsible for that? Does that fall on you, or does that fall on the person we hire?
Well, I think that I'm really, because I said I'm not a marketer, so I'm really going to be relying on, you know, the consultants that we hire, but it's important that we listen to our other, you know, our downtown organizations and the Chamber about what they have, what has worked, what is missing, you know, and how it can be linked and all in one place. I mean, I think that's really important. I know that when I've searched for things, sometimes I have a hard time, you know, especially from the, you know, the Town of Bennington website is great, but how can you get to all of the different sites that are promoting Bennington? And so, to have it really in one spot is going to be important.
Okay, I think it's very exciting.
But I also think, you know, we are going to be working and continuing to work with the Better Bennington Corporation with their task, with the task force that formed and that presented to you, because they also have the marketing expertise that has helped us get this far, right?
Jean?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify more for the public. The task force is Maru, Sheila Harden, and Lynn Green. And then there's a hired company, and then there's you. So, there's sort of like a three-legged stool. I'm a little unclear, and it's really just for clarification, what role the task force will play and how they're going to work together?
I think it's laid out in here that they will help to look through the RFP, you know, when we get the proposals, then they're also going to help look through those, because they're coming at it with a marketing background.
Okay.
And so, they're going to help, you know, kind of figure out who has the best proposal. And the other piece is looking at the content, you know, really helping to build this out. And I'm sure that we will have a few meetings. I mean, we don't want to be spending a lot of money and time with a consultant with a large committee, you know, so I think I'm going to be more of the liaison with the consultant, but I'll be sort of reporting, you know, what the recommendations of the marketing task force are.
Okay, so the task force will have a much closer relationship with the consultants than you will?
Um, no, it's the other way around.
The other way around, okay.
She's point, yeah.
Okay.
But I think, if I could, I think it's also important to note that not only will the task force have input into the content, but with Shannon as the liaison, there's an opportunity for the entire community to offer suggestions and opportunities for their ideas to come forward. So, it's not just a small group and a consultant.
Right.
We're hoping that it's going to be much broader than that.
Okay, thank you.
That's a good distinction. Chad, you had your...
Yeah, I think this was really written well, and for those who haven't read it, I know it is on social media for part of our board packet, but if it's possible, just, you know, it's going to be in the banner. Is the entire submission RFP going to be in the banner or just a...
I think the link will be on the Town website. Is that how it works?
Okay, so if people haven't read it, I really think they should. I really like the way, under the requirements, it's really spelled out what we're looking for, what you guys are looking for. If someone were to submit an RFP and they were light in one section, do we have time to reach out to them and say, hey, can you shore up, you know, section five for us? Or are we just going to reject?
I think, I think we can, we have time. I mean, you know, I think it is important that we try and get something going, you know, during tourist season, but there's time to, definitely, there's flexibility within the schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Chad, if I may, it's going to be difficult, I think, once the RFPs are submitted and opened, to go back to someone and say, oh, you were weak here, can you confirm that? That tends to tilt a table in one direction or another. So, I think if people, if people are submitting, I think it's important that they put their best foot forward.
Absolutely. I completely agree. I mean, I'm just saying...
And it is, it's fairly detailed, you know, if anybody has looked at it. It does really go through the scope of work, the more broad scope of work that I mentioned, but then it really goes into detail onto the website in particular, so that, you know, we're getting the idea of what we need.
Bill, I've got you in the queue. You...
Great. My question is in two parts for 13 sections each, no. So, for me, this is all about the end product, and $50,000 in the grand scheme of things isn't very much, so I really do have two questions, though. The first is, I think our purchasing policy would have you get this to at least two people, but where are you going to get it so that we find the right people, be they local or not? Because the way this looks in the end really matters. The second question is, will you have the opportunity to see products by the bidder so that you can look at what their pages look like? How do they flow? Are they easy to use? Are they, you know, do they go between technologies easily?
Right. Well, I think we would really be looking for the firm that already has a very strong web presence and a portfolio, so that we could easily search their different sites and see how much, you know, what we're, if it matches sort of what we're looking for and what the task force has helped to envision as far as visuals. And I think you got an idea of the visuals when Lynn was presenting with the task force, and it's important to also note that they have really been populating, you know, the web with their own finances with Bennington, Vermont Begins Here, and they've put it on to the Berkshire Ad Guides and the Williamson Chamber as well. So, if you're in the area of Williamson and pick one of those up, you can see some of what some of those visuals will look like, or an example. And as far as quality, I think that we do have, I mean, I'm more familiar with these firms in the Berkshires, because I used to work with Berkshire Grown, and so I know of a couple of them there that are very high-quality. I think the reason that it would be nice to focus on regional is not only to find someone local, but also because there is going to be a dialogue process. So, if we, if we found someone in Burlington, it's going to be more difficult to really have the face-to-face meetings that would, I think, help get us the end product that we want. But that being said, we definitely want to find the best. So, I'm sure that, I'm sure that the task force will help me to think about who to reach out to, but I think if I reach out to at least five different firms, that we're going to, we're going to get some really competitive bids.
Jane, it also, as you mentioned before, it also can be publicly available to anyone either on the website...
Right.
...Facebook page, and also on the banner, something to reach a lot of people, but sometimes that will, so other places will find it in the banner and then not put it on other websites, so it will be available for anybody to submit. It won't be just focused on...
Bill, you have a second question, or was that...
No, that was it.
That was two, okay.
Did I answer this?
Those are good points, and it is, it's worth stating, the RFP process is an exercise both in financial management, but also in fairness. So, we want to give opportunities to people who might not normally come across our door and organizations that might be very competent to do this work, but that might not be people we're used to working with. So, I do think that the, your point, Stuart, is right on, that we take what we get and we make the decision based on that. It's not fair to then go back and kind of ask a single individual for more information. Other comments from the Board? I have a couple, but I'll hold them to the end. Are there anything that people are dying to? One thing that I feel strongly about, Shannon, is besides that RFP fairness thing, is really the kind of accountability on this piece. You know, I do feel, I understand that there are analytics, but in my mind, anyway, this is a pilot project. So, I don't feel that this Select Board has made a commitment to $50,000 every year. I feel like we know that, that marketing needs to happen, and I think that we are trying to see what we can do with the money that we have. We did pull from different economic development pots, so it didn't come directly out of the normal funding, but I'm not sure we could do this every year unless we find out that this really is working for us. So, I would be interested to hear more about how we analyze this investment, and maybe I'll ask you that first and then ask you my second question afterwards.
Well, I believe that's part of the responsibility of the firm that we hire, is to really show us those results. As far as the digital marketing piece, this really would be, this would be then done. I mean, there would still be costs to manage it, but it wouldn't be $50,000. So, I think the way I would look at it is if, you know, the Town could also look towards potentially grant funding. I know that other towns have done that as well, or other regions, but I also think that that model of presenting to the Board a proposal of best use of funds, you know, in similar fashion, you know, if there's another proposal for, here's what we need to work on on year two or year three, because we will have that infrastructure, but it won't, the maintenance of that will not be the same cost as it is for this first year.
You know, before I go to my last question, it might be worth just having you go a little bit, on a little bit more detail about this infrastructure piece, so that there, it sounds to me like there's, this RFP is building something which would then be in place and would then require less maintenance, and we might look at other investments at that point. So, have I got that right in what way you're seeing it?
Right, I mean...
It's not the whole economic development picture. It's building one specific tool that we need in that quiver of economic development tools.
Right, I mean, it's just the digital piece. So, obviously, there are a lot of different ways to do marketing. You know, there's print media, there's, you know, taking out different ads in different locations, you know. So, this would be the digital piece, but what was the first part of your question again that you asked?
Well, just to talk a little bit more about the infrastructure...
What that infrastructure would look like?
What's the real value we would be getting from this, from this RFP? What's the most we could hope for, and how long would it last us? What's Bennington getting for it?
Well, it's bringing that entire concept to life of Vermont Begins Here and populating it with something that's really living and active, that can have eventually a community calendar, that can have, you know, events posted and then be linked directly to an email listserv, so that people are getting announcements about things that are coming up. It can also have blog posts that, you know, go more in-depth into different topics, whether it's the arts or recreation or, you know, different events, you know, there can be longer pieces that are written. And it can also connect by having that website, then you also are connecting it to social media, and if you have Instagram and Facebook, then you're able to really even bring it to life more with photography and stories, so that it's really an active, a really active campaign, which we don't have right now. So, that's the infrastructure, but once that's built, you know, we're paying the consultant more to build that, but then the maintenance of that, we don't need to be paying a consultant to do. We need to talk more about then who manages that over time, but that wouldn't be, that would be something that could be done, you know, a few hours a week, just to keep contributing posts and content on the different sites. So, that's, but to create that infrastructure really does require a certain expertise, and that's why we were hiring a consultant to do it, and particularly to have the search engine optimization, which frankly, I don't totally understand how it works, but I know that it's all about influencing the Google search. And in the beginning, you really have to do that with paid advertising, I believe, so that you're really paying for keyword searches. I mean, it was interesting, today, I just typed in, you know, things to do in Bennington, and one of the first sites that came up was the Deerfield Valley site. You know, so we really, we want our site to be at the top for all of the searches that relate to Bennington. So, that's really what you're getting when you're doing that kind of digital marketing.
That's great. So, my last question is maybe more of a statement, but it feels to me like we owe a lot of gratitude to the Marketing Task Force that has brought a tremendous amount of intellectual rigor to this and has brought a lot of good content and has helped you develop a very compelling RFP. I'm with Chad. I'm with Shannon. I think it's, I think it's very well-written. But the way I see it is that going forward, this becomes a town, you know, really you own this. And I see this, you could consult anybody you wanted to going forward, but I see this as, as a project of the town and that you would consult with people that you need to, whether or not it's the marketing task force. So it could be multiple people from the town. And to Stuart's point, that there would also be the opportunity for input from the town through you. So that's the way I see it. I don't see the marketing task force as driving this anymore. They've gotten to us this, to this point, and that's great, and we're extremely appreciative. And they've offered to provide content and other, other really helpful pieces of this. And they're, they've offered to be available to you if you need them, but it feels to me like this becomes a project of the town at this point. Is that, have I got that right?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Okay. Everybody, everybody sat up here? Anyone from the audience want to speak? So let's do, we'll do Shannon and then Joel and, no? Okay. Yeah, please give us your name.
Good evening. I'm Shannon, I'm the director of the Better Bennington Corporation. And just, I'm going to speak on behalf of the volunteers that make up the marketing task force. And a quick history of how it came to be. And it was over about a year ago, the select board had asked, like, are marketing efforts? And with some changes in local community about who is in charge or charged with marketing, specifically Bennington, is when I met with our board and we decided to put together a task force that represented a greater area than just the downtown that we were charged with and putting together a plan that could be followed as far as marketing Bennington We carefully selected the people on the task force based on their talent, their skill, their history, or the type of marketing they've done. And we looked into what they had done in print marketing, online marketing, and put together a really good team. Again, they are volunteers, and the proposal that they presented to the select board was one that they designed using their creative talent and expertise. And the agreement that the task force had, the task force has was, here's a proposal we're putting together that we will accomplish for free for the town of Bennington. And it was outlined what they would accomplish and what the town have to fund to accomplish back to where the RFP came in. And that is step one, looking for a digital marketing company that can not only help build the website and the foundation, but also professionally manage it throughout the year. A lot of the content that is to be provided for the plan that the task force proposed is proprietary. And speaking for the task force, as we start moving forward, and I want to make it clear what the expectations are from number one, the task force will not end up being a task-driven committee of everything being handed down to them and then expected to just do it the way it's handed to them. They use their creative in creating this proposal and continue to volunteer to follow through with that. Understanding that the town owns the Vermont, or Bennington Vermont Begins Here campaign has approved funding to get year one out of, if you recall the presentation, it was $50,000 the first year. And then if we want to keep adding more efforts to it, billboard, television, radio, print, it was all laid out how to expand it. I just don't want the volunteers, if, if the town is going to take control of building it, managing it, I don't want these volunteers to be expected down the road because it's just task force, it's not a Bennington, Town of Bennington task force, it's a BBC task force of volunteers. If it takes on a direction that detracts from the creative that they've put together, I know they won't stay involved doing the work of other creatives' ideas. I know working with Shannon during the transition, she has made it easy to, very easy transitioning to, how is this really going to play out? And she's doing a wonderful job. But I'll keep speaking for the task force, saying, as long as this small group of volunteers doesn't become responsible for the expectations of others, they'll stay involved. So as it goes forward, the task force is fully committed to making the proposal that we made to the select board a few months ago become fully realized. However, if it takes a completely different, a different direction, the task force, I would just have to ask them again how much of their input and proprietary information that they'd still be willing to put into this. I've taken so much of their professional time that I know it's negatively affected their businesses already. And they continue to tell me they're dedicated to do this. I just don't want the expectations of the volunteers to take on a direction that it was never meant to do. And if, hopefully, I'm portraying their world as clearly as possible. But if you have any questions on that, I'd love to answer them or address them.
I think we've got it. I think we're very lucky to have volunteers and to have free content and to have a lot of intellectual help with this. And when you have volunteers, they are, they have a lot of their own decisions to make. And so hopefully, the RFPs that come through and in Shannon's consideration and the town's consideration, something will be selected that will really work for them. And even if it doesn't, I think we're extremely thankful for them, to them, for getting us this far. But I'm optimistic that, that we're going to continue to have a long and, and good relationship with them.
Okay. Well, thanks.
So, I'm sorry, any other questions for John before? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Good evening.
Hello. Joel Luntner. I wasn't planning, I was planning on just presenting a petition to you very quickly. It'd take maybe a minute. But after that presentation, I think I have to clarify some history here that's important. Last March or April, I came before the select board to talk about requesting money for a billboard in Husick Falls. The DBA had convened a meeting, including the town community development director, Zerwatt at the time, members of the chamber, the BBC, and our organization, to talk about doing a billboard. I came, made that presentation, and the, Tom Jacobs suggested that, to Zerwatt at the time, that she convene a group made up of myself, Jonah Spivak, Maru, Lynn Green, and Sheila Harden, and I believe Eric Peterson, representing Old Castle. We met through the summer discussing paper billboards in Troy, I'm sorry, paper billboards in Husick, some other initiatives, a enhanced website that would be a tourism website. And then at one point, the group of Sheila, Maru, and Lynn decided that they wanted to pay out of their own pockets, out of their own business funds, for a digital billboard in Troy. And decided they didn't want to pursue any of the other ideas that we have been talking about. It was at that point that Zerwatt withdrew from our meetings, I withdrew from the group, and my understanding is Jonah also withdrew from the group because he's not part of this present group. That was how this task force, I guess, started. I'm not sure where the BBC got involved. Somewhere around August, September, I believe, of 2018, they joined with Maru, Sheila, and Lynn to start this task force and discuss marketing. I'm not, they came up with the name task force. It was never given by the town, so I'm not sure where that came from. I'd sure love to hear from the board any corrections to that if my history is incorrect in any way. So I, I don't believe that the BBC or this task force has been tasked by this board to do anything. That being said, a lot of great things have been done. We've gotten to a point now where we've identified one tool in the toolkit of marketing. And based on the research that we've done in the DBA, this website would cost $8,000 to $10,000 to do, another $10,000 to build it up for SEO and content. And I think some other members are going to talk in greater detail about that. My point, the reason that I'm here tonight, is to say, and let me just read off this petition because it, it really has to do with how much support the downtown has for this marketing initiative. This is exactly what downtown merchants have been waiting for, for years and years. And we think it's wonderful that the select board's doing it. We think it's fantastic that the BBC is taking an active role in making sure that this happens. That being said, there are aspects of this RFP that I think don't identify the big picture. It's, it's starting a process that's kind of, it's already makeshift. And again, I think some other members are going to talk specifically why that is. Let me read the petition of support that we have for this. And I think what we're asking is more inclusivity, more input from the downtown merchants. You'll note that in this task force, there are no downtown merchants. There are no representatives. And I think that's, that's a problem. The petition states, "As a downtown Bennington merchant, I'm excited about the select board's decision to spend $50,000 on marketing. I believe downtown merchants should have a voice in determining how these funds will be spent. How can the select board involve more merchants in this process?" So that's really our question to you, is how can the downtown merchant community become more involved in how this perhaps one-time opportunity is spent? So I'd just like to hand this off to you and whoever holds the mic.
Thank you. Shannon, would you like to take a crack at addressing that or shall we wait until the end?
I can just say, you know, I had Joel.
Have to, I'm sorry, have to do the mic. Yep.
I met with Joel and Betsy and some of the other Downtown Bennington Alliance members about a week or so ago. And while we haven't come up with an actual strategy of, of how to, to, you know, have that input from downtown, that's something that I said that I was committed to when we met. I'm going to be going to your board meeting. And one, one of the things that I said was, you know, if you look on this, it says what's not in the scope of work is primarily the, the copy, the content that's going to be. I mean, we're going to be hiring, you know, professional copywriters, but what they write about and what we want to highlight as far as what's downtown, what events, you know, et cetera, is something that we create. So I think that, of course, we have to have a voice of downtown.
Okay. If you'd be willing to stay at the table, please. I think Shannon, we're not, I think we're going to go back and forth with you.
Okay.
But you can move the mic over. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize it was the second person joining you.
Austin is also going to join us. She is, this is Austin Bevan. She's the owner of Mini and Me Consignment right on Main Street. And you, I'm Betsy Garinawall, and I'm here as a downtown merchant, member of the DBA, also as a taxpayer. And some of the things that I have to say, I'm also, I've been working in an online publisher for about 15 years doing market research and website usability. So I kind of feel like I have a little bit of experience as well. And so hopefully, you'll take some of my questions and help me understand. I did read the RFP pretty thoroughly, and I have some, I'm calling them nitpicks. And I just was hoping you could answer them.
Betsy, would you be willing to pull that mic a little bit closer? I think Mike is fussing with the volume to try to pick you up there.
Yep. So on page two, I just was wondering, and I know there's probably an easy answer, like, what, what a WordPress site is and why we would use a WordPress site in the RFP?
It's, it's just a template for website design. And I actually don't have that into.
Okay. I was just wondering, you know, what, like, do.
It's a ease of use, perhaps, you know, as far as updating that, that might be one of the reasons.
Okay. Perfect. So in my business, we call things, we call key performance indicators, it's kind of like accountability. And in the RFP, I saw that, I didn't really understand some of the accountability, and I was wondering if we could do something more measurable, like, say, you're going to have X number of email signups or X percentage of drive, you know, driving clicks to the website versus on page four, I just, I think it was a little bit loose. Some of the key performance indicators, you know, we should just change them or make them a little bit more measurable. So that was just another question I had.
Could I just ask, do you have your comments also in writing so that later on, there would be an easy way to refer?
Yeah, I can email this to you guys if you want.
Yeah, or I think, yeah, probably to Shannon, but, okay.
Yep. Okay. And I was just looking at the timeline. It says there's, it would take three months to launch. If the selection is on May 17th, you want the website to launch on or by 8:15. I don't know how long it takes a digital marketing firm to actually put together a website with all the back and forth. I was just wondering, that seems kind of like a long time. And August is already, we're missing, you know, the whole summer and.
Shannon, before you start, there is some urgency in getting this out, this RFP out.
And we would like to get this out as soon as possible. Betsy, I don't want to cut you off, but I do, I do want to ask, have you and Shannon already talked about this list of questions you have?
No, not at all. No.
If, it would, I think it would be helpful for the board to have you, to kind of summarize the big points that we really need to try to fix.
Sure. Yeah, that, that's great. I appreciate that John and everyone has said that everyone can have a voice. I think that's great.
Absolutely.
And I just don't think the task force should be just three people and, you know, if, if they don't like whatever changes are made and they're not going to participate, I don't understand that philosophy really, but that's a whole other topic. So I can.
And I don't mean to cut off your specifics. They're very valuable.
No, that's fine.
But I have a feeling that they would mean more if you, if you took them directly to Shannon and she could work.
Sure.
In the ideal world, I think if they were fixable things, Shannon, if you could, if you could kind of work them in, and they're small changes that don't need to come back to the board, I think it would be great to get this out so that we don't lose this summer.
Right. I just don't, I just was hoping that this RFP isn't going out as is because I do have some issues with it.
Sure.
And I'm happy to work with you individually. That's no problem. Can I just talk about one other thing?
Yeah, but no, please.
Okay.
I am interested in your overarching opinions and, you know, what you feel the board.
Well, I, you know, I have a lot more details on the actual RFP, but I'll work with Shannon separately and give you guys a summary of our discussion. And maybe there will be some revisions on it based on, hopefully, you feel that whatever I have to say makes sense.
I mean, and one thing I will say, though, I think, sure, if we can come up with some more measurable, like you said, key performance indicators.
Betsy, could you swing the mic, please?
But I also think that we can, as far as really drilling down into detail, that's something that we can do during an interview process as well. As long as we have the scope of work defined. Does that make sense?
Well, I think on the RFP, they need to know what they're bidding on by what they're supposed to be measuring. But anyway, that sounds good. The other thing, I just had a quick question about the BenningtonVermont.org website. Did you guys change that recently or has it always been the way it is?
I haven't done anything with the Bennington.
Because I, I thought I had looked at it recently, and it has to do with this RFP because it's about the Town of Bennington's website that's currently there. Was that changed recently? Has anyone looked at it?
It may have been.
It may have been small updates made to it.
Because it looks like it has.
But I don't know.
You're the chairman.
Did it always have the Vermont Begins Here URL attached to it? Has it always had that?
I believe that goes back to Mike Harrington's day, yes.
So it always has been that?
I believe it's had that.
Okay.
I just interrupted you, but one of the things that I think the overarching, if we want to put this in a nutshell, is that there are components of a $50,000 marketing package that need to be addressed before this RFP goes out for this one piece because they're contingent upon this one piece. So it's not just a matter of writing pretty content pieces and putting on photos down the line. It's a matter that that stuff has to be integrated into the infrastructure of the website. This is my understanding from the research that we've done. And what I think we're asking you to do is consult with a professional yourselves. Don't take our word for it. And ask them, is it best practice to do this infrastructure piece without doing the content piece altogether? Because without, the content leads into SEO, which is what Shannon was talking about. SEO is the thing that drives people to our site. So if, for example, our site is titled Vermont Starts Begin.
Vermont Begins Here.
Right. We're going to lose out because it doesn't say Bennington in it. There are technical, in the URL?
Let's not.
If it is, maybe then correct me. Because that would be a big solution if it does. I don't think it does. There are technical aspects that I think could be answered by your own specialists. Don't take our word for it.
Yeah, just one other thing. I just wish that earlier on, it's not just a digital piece. I know you said eventually it's going to be, but I don't understand why it can only be online first. Why can't we do a more broader reach to demographics? Online is only going to get a certain demographic. My mother isn't on Facebook or Instagram, but she reads magazines. She drives and sees a billboard. She's 80. You know, 70-year-olds might be on Facebook and Instagram, but, you know, retired person as well as younger people should also be reached with this marketing budget.
May I ask, Shannon, is there a, I sort of didn't, I didn't realize this is where we were going with this tonight. I'm wondering if there is a timeline. So, I mean, basically, you've put this out for consideration. Is there a timeline for comments? And is there a way for us to get comments? Because I'm thinking, just as Betsy has comments, I'm thinking there are probably other people who would like to be able to make comment and then have it, you know, have it evaluated and then a final decision. Because I know that.
But it will, I mean, you're kind of asking two different things. One, which is, let's get this out faster, but also let's all comment.
But we want it right.
So, right. But I'm saying that will delay all of the other pieces. I mean, that's just something to consider. But, yeah, I mean, I think that if you have comments on the RFP, let's look at it, let's try to get it out there. Because it will be a process to really find the best firm to do it.
Do you guys agree that it should just be digital for this first piece?
I think we did agree on the first phase.
We did agree on that.
Yes.
So we have already been, we have been convinced that this is where we're going to start. So to me, this is not the whole shooting match, but to me, this is the first piece that we have agreed that we want to start on. We've agreed several months ago. To my way of thinking, this is, again, not the whole marketing deal it's needed, but this is a piece of scaffolding that we need to build.
Since this is about the digital in Bennington and people are looking up Bennington and they go to this website, who's managing that right now? Because there's some pretty bad errors on the website right now.
I don't know that. Do you know that story?
I believe that's Jonah who manages.
Okay. I mean, not to call anyone out, but there's broken links, there's businesses on there that aren't even there. It's pretty un.
We really can't have that representing our town, especially not when Deerfield has such a sweet site up that works.
I mean, you know, this is easy fixes that won't take any money or time, and I think it should be done sooner than later.
Betsy, before you leave, I would love to, Austin, you know, would love to hear from you if you have thoughts on this. And we'd also like to just say we're glad to have you downtown.
Thank you.
And glad to have you here at the meeting tonight.
I, as well, have gone over the RFP. I've had meetings with Lynn Green. Obviously, we've all, as a collective of downtown merchants, have spoken to Shannon. I can't say that I know a lot about, like, SEOs and website integration. I only use social media for my downtown business. I do have a website, but the traffic is very poor. So I don't have any input on that. My only worry in the RFP is in talking about the distribution of content. It talks about one blog post per month, which in my research, as somebody who utilizes social media for my business, that's just not enough content. Granted, I don't think that my small thrift store at this time deserves a headline around the Bennington website, but if there's only one blog post per month, there's no way that anything I can do is going to surpass, you know, the big, other big things that some bigger conglomerates in our town do. So I will never do anything as, you know, worthy of showcase as Bennington Potters or The Country Club or even, you know, Fiddlehead or something. I have a much larger following. So that obviously worries me a little bit. The lack of different media mediums also worries me. A large market, you know, a large group of my customers are folks who are older shopping for their grandkids, and many of them don't know I'm there. And many of them only knew I was there because I was briefly featured in the News Guide a couple times or, you know, for the cruise and then once, like, as a press release. So that, you know, it is a little bit of a concern. I have a lot of respect for John Shanahan, the BBC, Lynn Green, Sheila, Maru as business owners and what they've contributed to this. But I just think that more seats at the table and more voices is a really good idea, especially if only a few people are going to be interacting with this marketing company. I just feel a broader spectrum of input is a good idea. And I think that's very much so what Joel's petition states. And it shows that a lot of us on Main Street are on board with that idea. I mean, I know I signed it in many of the shops up and down. It's pretty extensive. You guys should take a look at it. I hope you will. So, yeah, that's really my only input, is just, I would like a broader spectrum of representation for downtown businesses to market downtown Bennington. It's, I hope for a lot for this town.
That's really helpful input. Yep, thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, it's important to remember that this money is for all of Bennington. You know, it is downtown Bennington, yes. Downtown is part of Bennington, but it's also for all of the other people in Bennington that feel like they haven't been marketed, except when Joel's done a video or something like that. So it feels to me like we are closing in on a situation where I hear Shannon saying there will be an opportunity for people to get, to have that dialogue and to have that kind of content. I think, I would predict this board would not want this effort to die in the vine because of committee churn. So we want to try to balance out this notion of a committee kills stuff versus wanting to get public input. So that's.
I would really, I think it would be great if you could get me your comments in the next day or so.
I can give them tonight.
That would be great. And then I can incorporate any changes.
Or answer the questions.
Or answer the questions. But I'd really like to get the RFP up by the end of the week, if possible.
Sure. So let's go.
Very quick. So I have a comment and a question. One is, I think getting it up quickly is really important because after all, it's digital. We can edit it at any time going forward. If we find out that Joel's comment is valid and we need to make a change, we can do that right away, as long as we do it in the development process. But the other thing that I want to understand as you go through it, and we'll talk about it the next time it comes up in a meeting, is I want to understand this being about the greater reach of Bennington. It's, you know, is it Old Bennington? Is it North Bennington? Who eventually become the stakeholders providing content that the developer decides best represents us all together? And how, and that's maybe the committee that's inputting to you so that you can start to filter that information? I'd just like to understand that as we go through the process. It's obviously downtown. It's obviously Old Bennington. There's the monuments there. But what else?
But that's a really good point. And that's where, you know, working with the Chamber, working with BCIC, the Regional Economic Development Group, is really important. Right? Because they're looking at a broader area.
Well, I think, I don't know quite what the board would like to do on this, but I believe it's our feeling that we would like this, we would like to get Bennington marketed and we would like to get this underway. If I got that right from this group, is there?
Yes.
Okay. So how can we do that quickly? You're going to get comments from Betsy and Austin in the next couple days. Joel, if you have any comments, you could certainly get them to her. John, same with you. Eric, you know, but let's get this thing out. This is the RFP. This is not, we're not making the decision who's doing it. We're asking for proposals. And if none of them are good, we don't have to take any of them.
And it's also really only one piece of that bigger picture. But, I mean, I would argue that the digital piece needs to come first because then any other media can refer back to it, you know?
I get that. But I, so do you need a motion from us to?
Well, I had one more question, which is, okay, once I get some feedback and then, so what's the next step that I need to present? I mean, do I need to then also run it by the Select Board and then you?
I would say no.
Okay.
Well, this isn't RFP, you know? This is not, again, the decision of which company to go with or which direction we're taking. We're looking for proposals here. We're looking for sophisticated proposals. And I'm frankly glad that you didn't put too much specificity in this RFP because I would want them to come up with that. If they can't come up with some very specific issues and problems, then we spoon-fed them too much in the RFP. So I do think you should make them work for it.
Can I just ask one more question?
Sure. Come to the mic, please.
So what would be the harm in having an RFP that also, since we're not making any decisions on who you're going to hire, asking, looking for a marketing firm who can do the whole package? Who can do the content? Who can do the infrastructure? Who can advise on print, branding, and all of this? What would be wrong with looking for that company out there? Instead of just saying, oh, well, you know, these three people with successful businesses are telling us we should do it this way. Why not look for a professional? I'm not understanding.
But we, I do think it's, maybe it's a little bit confusing that the content, we would be hiring a firm to do, to create the copy. We're just, we're not writing all the copy. Does that make sense?
It does, but wouldn't that be a different firm than the firm that you're hiring that were looking to do an RFP now?
Ideally, no, that was within the scope of work.
Oh, so you're saying this firm that does the infrastructure might also then undo content?
Right.
Thank you for clarifying that. I think that's great.
But Shannon, this may not burn the whole $50,000. We're hoping.
Right, I think it's going to burn.
So there are other decisions that have to come down the pike. But we need this piece of scaffolding.
This is the first step.
Before we can do anything else.
Train at some point can maybe start to leave the station.
That's the goal.
Just get it rolling.
All right. So would anybody like to, let's see, how can we get through this? Do we need a motion on this, do you think?
I would say that by consensus, the board could authorize Shannon to take whatever input is available to her over the next several days, revise the RFP. I don't think you need a motion.
Well, that certainly is how I'm feeling about this. Is there any other board?
Just in case, so moved.
Second, okay. So I'm going to cut off discussion at, oh, John, all right. So go ahead, but please be brief, and then I'm going to cut off discussion, okay?
Before we go much further, I would just invite everybody and encourage everybody to review the presentation that was made to the Select Board. A lot of the discussion and questions that were brought up tonight are in that presentation.
Yes, they are.
And if everybody really had looked at it first, a lot of this could have been answered a lot quicker and easier, more easily. Secondly, and I think most importantly, is everybody wants it up and running really quickly. Funding hasn't been approved to even begin until July. The work that's been done up to this point has been comped, up to and including preparing the RFP and meeting with the company is planned to be done for free also. The task force isn't just made up of three business owners in Bennington. I am also on the task force. I'm the one that called the task force together. I do speak for downtown. Downtown is my number one concern, but since it's a town marketing plan, I invited people from outside of downtown. Eric Peterson is also on the task force. He serves on my board, but he also represents the cultural community of Bennington as well. So it was well-rounded in perspective, but expertise is why it was there. All of the URL questions, very basic, already addressed.
What do you mean by that? Very basic, already addressed?
Yeah. In the marketing task force. And I don't.
John, I think we're pretty.
So those are the points. I think we're good here. And it doesn't affect the RFP at all.
So thank you for that. And I think, thank everybody for their comments and their thoughts on this. But I do feel like unless there are strenuous objections, that it's the consensus of this board that we would like you to take, accept comment, use what you feel like is appropriate, get the RFP out. I recognize we can't hire anyone until July 1st, but there's a certain amount of churn that leads up to that. So let's get that part done and be ready to go when we can.
Can I just say that it just shows that we're all very passionate about this? We just all care about our town. That's really what it's all about.
Good luck.
I love everyone who's done all the work that they've done.
Very good.
But, you know, that's my final comment.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And, Don, I need to correct one statement. Actually, some $55,000, $45,000 is actually available prior to July 1. We only pulled $5,000 out of the next fiscal year.
Okay. So anyway, that's all the more reason to get going. Thank you for this, Betsy. Okay, so we are going to move on to liquor licenses.
Yes. We have a revised schedule for you tonight. Some have been added. We also have a new liquor license. And recall that the new liquor license will require your signatures at the very back page, and I'll circulate those for your signatures.
And how about a manager's report?
I want a liquor license, so I'm going to recuse myself from signing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just kind of note that.
Just one of them. You can sign the rest. Probably the rest, yeah. I haven't seen them yet.
Okay.
I don't think you own any of the other ones. Good.
All right. Under the manager's board, I don't have any action items for you tonight. You have received the annual calendar. It's been revised from what it was two years ago, I think it was. So please, if you have things that you want to see there that the board normally does in the course of its annual time together, please let me know. We can always add to it and clarify it. On the PFOA situation, there still has not been a formal agreement announced, but the engineers are working feverishly to get the plans ready for bidding. And St. Gobain and the state have reached at least a tentative agreement to move forward in the area known as Phase 2, which is the northeast quadrant of the community. Portions of Route 7, Apple Hill, Michael's Drive, Houghton Lane, East Road, and Chapel Road. So we're expecting that work will begin sometime this summer and take at least two construction seasons to complete. And the wastewater treatment facility project will be starting up again in earnest sometime very soon. Originally was scheduled for late April, but there seems to be some emphasis on the part of the contractor to get going sooner if the weather permits. Our work is to clean two digesters, which is a very time-consuming and not necessarily an easy project, before they get ready to start so that those are available to them when they hit the site. So that's where we are right now with those two major projects, and we'll meet the deadlines.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Any questions for Stuart on the manager's report? One of the things I'd like to try to do with this annual calendar is continue to flesh it out so that every member can look at this calendar and have a sense of what's going on in the first part and the second part of the month. And so I think we might even do a little work together, Stuart and I, breaking this further down. I'd like to add the manager, the quarterly manager review, job review sessions. I'd like to add other things like that. So as things occur to you that, that happen regularly, that you always wonder, oh, when does that happen? Let's get that on the calendar so people don't have to keep wondering. And I think that, that is, will be helpful to a lot of people that, both to our board but to people outside of our board. So thank you for your efforts, Stuart, on that.
Can we ask Stuart questions that are not on his report?
You know, we're gonna, yes, sure. We'll start other business. How about, and...
They're super quick.
Why don't we start other business, and you go ahead and ask him that?
Okay. So I know there were two dates for the implicit bias training. Can you refresh my memory on...
There's only, there's only one date for implicit bias training. That is April 30th.
April 30th.
We will have two sessions on that day.
Oh, that's what it was, two sessions on April.
There'll be the same session so that you can pick the morning session and the afternoon session. At this point, the exact time, start time of those sessions has not been determined. We have set aside nine to noon and one to four. It may end up being 10 to noon and two to four, depending on, on the length of the session that the presenter feels that is necessary and to allow for plenty of questions.
Okay. And then a companion question is, who can come to the implicit bias training?
We've invited all of the town staff, obviously. The select board are invited.
The police department, the fire department.
All, all, all town staff are, other than the volunteer fire department, everybody else is mandated to be there.
Can they, can, can they come?
They can come.
They can? Okay. Did you know that they can come?
I don't know whether they know that or not. I don't, I haven't reached out to them individually at this point. Well, that's good. The rescue squad is asked to be involved, and they are willing to pay a portion of the fee to have their folks attend either the morning or the afternoon session. And I have one individual from the SPSU that is asked to attend, and I have, I've told that individual that we wouldn't object to them attending. And at this point, there was a question at one time about whether or not some of the bar association people might want to attend as well, but I don't have that as a formal request at this point. So we're, we're gonna open the doors to as many people as we can, but seating is limited. We have over 91 town employees full-time. The rescue squad has a number of employees, I think it's in the 40s range, and we don't want to try to bring in more than 70 or so participants in either of the sessions, just so that they don't get unwieldy.
So people should, if they're planning on coming, they should let you know?
If, if they're outside of the organization, the town organization, rescue squad organization, yes, they should ask if they'd be willing to attend.
Okay. And really quickly, are the trees downtown being replaced?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Carson?
On that, if attendance grows too large, are you, I mean, if you invite the fire department and other people like that, I mean, have we, have you considered other locations willing to host?
We, we haven't at this time.
You might not have to cross the bridge, right?
Yeah. That may be a bridge we need to cross. And, but at this point, I'm anticipating that we should be able to handle everybody in this facility with those numbers.
Just one question.
I have one more thing. Shannon, you might need to be able to help me with this one. I was at the rec center on Friday evening, take my son swimming there, and they were in this, maybe the second week or third week of the Friday night.
It's kids' night out.
Yeah. Can you just, maybe someone who knows the dates and knows what's offered, I was told about it when I, I'd heard about it and I'd read about it, but I kind of was reminded when I was there. And it looked like it was going great. The kids were having a blast. I watched them go downstairs. There was pizza. I just want to maybe use the moment to remind...
Yeah. No, that's a good idea, to let people know. So it's every Friday night at the rec center from 6:00 to 8:30. You can bring your kids aged seven to 12, and they swim for about an hour, they get pizza that's been donated from Ramunto's, which is really great. Thank you, Ramunto's. And then they do an arts and crafts activity in one of the rooms at the rec center. So it's a great opportunity for the kids to have a night out and for the parents to have a night out, every Friday.
I can say, watching it, it was incredibly well-organized. The kids were having a blast.
That's great.
And I actually was sitting there and I was thinking, oh, I should have...
Next, you should have dropped them off. Right. And the other thing I was gonna say about that was, oh, what was it about? There's also an event coming up on, I think it's the 14th. There's gonna be the Easter Agahn that they usually do every year at the rec center. It's gonna be a healthy kids' day. So that's gonna be another great event for kids coming up.
Jim?
Did you make any arts and crafts that night?
Should have.
A question for you, Stuart, as far as the bias training. Do you think it'd be helpful if CAT TV covered it so that we...
Because it, it, I would say no. I think, I think the individuals, the employees that are gonna be there and receiving the training, I think really need to be free to ask whatever questions and make whatever comments they feel are legitimate. And it's really, it's not intended to be a public event. It's really meant to be a training for municipal employees, for the rescue squad employees, and for you folks as well.
These, these trainings often take place in much smaller settings, and so as we go forward in the future, there may be opportunities to do more personal, more in-depth trainings with, for example...
That's correct. This is, this is the first, first shot.
Right. This is the first shot, so. I apologize a little bit for going on about Town Vision, but I am really serious about our town plan, and I'm really serious about everybody remembering that this is at least our town vision. Serious enough that I asked Dan to have copies printed for every board member so that... Jim, I know you're gonna have plenty of time to read this up in Montpelier, but I think it's worth us going back to at least once a year so that we remember that this really is our vision. And furthermore, I'm not sure when the planning commission can come, Dan. Did they talk about that? So hopefully at the next meeting, I'd like to have what amounts a little bit to a work session with the planning commission to figure out what they're working on. They've got some, they may have some very sort of new thinking on zoning coming down the pike. They may have some other big projects this year, so it's really important for our board to know what the planners of our town future are working on. So I encourage you all to keep this handy and read it frequently. Jean?
Thank you. So I'm gonna go back to implicit bias. I'm just wondering, so how big is a too-big group? Because on the one hand, if it, if there are 80 people in a room, you may be less like, less inclined to ask questions anyway. So, you know, so that's a concern for me, is just maybe we need to, to have a second, you know, a second date. The other was, was there gonna be a supervisor training? That was a second-level training as well?
That is on May 1st.
Which is a different day?
It's the day following.
Okay. All right.
We're bringing, we're bringing the same, the same instructor down to do the implicit bias and then to do a training of supervisor personnel, probably in the morning following.
Okay. 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 Yeah. Which is good. Okay. Okay. And then Shannon, I just wanna say, your first Wednesday walk was wonderful, and you got great press for it today in the paper. And I think it's a wonderful initiative to walk from the rec center to the Y, to the rec, the rec center, the town to the rec center, which is a little further than I thought it was.
It was a good walk.
Yeah. Yeah. It's a good 20-minute walk. Yeah. So thank you.
Chad, what you got?
I was trying to find it quick. Maybe Dan can help me, but the new organized board of the Bennington, I don't even know what it's called now, the new board, there's a special election coming up, right? Which one?
Oh, yeah.
When is that election? Do we know the date?
Um...
20?
20, 20, I think it's the 23rd of April.
The southwest of our union...